I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Okay, I have an addition to the agenda. Under public hearings, Woolies is actually Woolies Western Grill is the official name of that company. Did I hear that there was something?
Yeah, and I'd like to make the motion that we move the executive session to the end of the meeting.
I'll second that.
Deal with that with the corresponding new business as well. Some of those will appear in the business also. And so if that was the case, recommend that those go with it.
Okay. We were wanting to make sure you were informed about those items before we voted on them. Okay, any other proposed changes to the agenda?
Can you state your motion, Carolyn? That would be a good question.
You want to add that? The motion to move the executive session to the end of the meeting with the items pertaining to that?
So, Items A and B on the executive session section to the end of the meeting after executive session.
All right.
Does everyone understand the change? Okay, I have no other changes, so all in favor?
I have one. I wanted to add one more to executive session. Your personnel.
So, in addition to the contracts, we are adding an Item D, personnel to executive session. And we do plan to make decisions after executive session, John. If I understand correctly? Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is there an opposition?
Tim.
Thank you.
Still passes. Motion carried. We will follow the agenda as changed. Minutes from the April 4th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Bills in between.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Current claims, I need to notify you of a couple of changes. First one is on page three. We are removing payment to the Hot Springs Star. We did not receive an invoice for that, so we are not planning to pay that with this set of bills. We will pay you though, John, I'm sure. The other item is on page 12, which is the back page. And we have a new amount for the invoice for Black Hills and Badlands Tourism. The new amount is $3,627.32, bringing our total -- I've got too many pages here, miss. Our total current claims to -- I'll give it to you. $167,563.18 with those two changes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Page five, whose boots are overbought?
Can my kid hear you?
I say, page five, whose boot?
Those are boots for the police department. Kyle, Mike, and he wasn't sure who the third one was. He was going to get back with me, but I asked the same question. Police department has a budget for clothing, and they don't choose certain things. And, oh, Justin, the new officer, was the third, I'm sure.
Also on page nine, we need construction. This is the second one up from the bottom. Because he's currently working under penalty, so we want to make sure that we don't pay him everything before we get the penalty and everything figured in there.
Tracy approves those bills that come through, so I would encourage you to talk to Tracy about your concerns. And he's not over the contracted amount yet. I believe there's some clause that he expects to bill us for. There's a lot clawing in his contract. But that's just my opinion and I encourage you to talk to her.
It's all I know.
Thank you, Tim. Any other discussion? Andrew?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Is that you, Jane?
It is.
Quarterly Library Board update. I have a hearing at 7:10. It is 7:06, so can you do it in four minutes?
I can do it in four minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having me here. The library continues to be the heart of the community. I'll just give you some brief statistics. These are for January, February, March.
Can you guys all hear okay?
No. Is it on?
I'm going to go closer to the mic, Jane, please.
Okay.
Better?
I must have turned it off at the moment. These statistics are for the first three months of the year, the first quarter. We've served 12,378 patrons. We've checked out 14,463 items. We've had 4,618 computer usages. 1,085 eBooks checked out, hosted 96 meetings, or made available rooms for 96 meetings, hosted 36 events. We've had 434 people at those events. We've issued 81 new cards, and we have a current card count of 5,452. These are some of the activities that have happened. April is the end of our regular programs, Storytime, Computer Classes, Movie, Lego Day, and Book Club. They proctored two college students through a semester of tests. Dawn, our library director, has proctored a high school student on the online U.S. Academic Decathlon. This is a self-motivated program which can lead to college scholarships. Amy Lee Caffin has attended a Jump Start workshop to get ready for the summer reading program. Amanda Jensen is our new children's librarian, and is a valued part of the community library team. We've had several tours of elementary kids through the library, and they seem to really enjoy it. We the Poets, We the People, held their spring gathering on April 1st. It was a great turnout, and we're asking people to mark their calendars for the fall gathering. A date has not yet been set. The adult coloring book night was a success, so much so that it's going to be repeated on April 22nd and May 26th. The Book Barn is now open, and as you know, that's a major fundraiser for the Friends of the Library, which are of great help to us. And they're open on every first Saturday and the third Friday. 50 cents a paperback, a dollar for a hardcover. In May, we're starting to gear up for the summer reading program, which touches a lot of lives in the city. And Ready, Set, Read is the theme for the year. And it's interesting, it's going to be a focus on both active exercise and nutrition, and how those are important. And on Thursday, Amanda and Dawn will visit the elementary school, talking with the kids about signing up for the reading program, and enticing them with planned activities and crafts. And Dawn went and talked to the Rotary Club within the last two weeks, and as in the past, they've given two bikes as prizes for the summer reading program, and we're hoping that they'll be able to do it again, also with helmets enclosed included. And the summer reading program runs from June 1st to the 27th or 28th, and in the past, we've had at least 150 participants. That concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Those are amazing numbers.
That's amazing staff. It's amazing building. We're really -- it's a good thing for our community. Thank you.
We are so busy, and we are so fortunate to have a board.
It's a great board.
That is so supportive. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Amazing to record. Thank you.
Have you ever been up there? There were wonderful volunteers.
Yes.
The number of --
Perfect, perfect four minute. It is now 7:10 on the dot, and we will go into the public hearing for temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Woolies Western Grill and Cellar. The event will be on the 29th of April, Mammoth Site Casino Night fundraiser.
Motion to approve.
Second. So, the hearing is now open. It gives the public an opportunity to comment on this event and this license.
Mayor?
I'll comment. I don't know if any of you know, but no one else was really willing to step up, so I'm now the president of Mammoth Site. So, in that capacity, I'd really encourage you to come out and support the Mammoth Site at $75 a ticket, a hundred, 250, I believe, a couple. It's a fun night, but it's a really major fundraiser for our community. It'd be great to see you all there.
Thanks, Jane. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Any other comments from the community public?
Motion to close the hearing.
Oh, wait a minute. This is still in Mammoth Site?
Yeah.
This is a public hearing for a temporary alcoholic beverage license for the fundraiser at the Mammoth Site called Casino Night.
I'll second his motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we want to vote on that?
I think the motion was approved.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go back up to communications from the public. Karen, are you here?
I am.
Great work, Mike. Good job.
Thank you.
Christmas in the Hills and Light Up Our Town.
I have to make this for a shorter person. Jane's a little taller than I am. My first comment is, yay, library!
Yeah, I agree.
It's a great place. If you haven't been there, you ought to go. Makes me smile every time I go in there and I see the kids playing chess. So, I came today to talk about Christmas in the Hills and Light Up Our Town. And I wanted to just give you all an update, kind of a report on what happened last year. So, remember, this is a three-phase project. And so what I'm going to talk about is what happened with Phase One. And the most important thing, I think, that happened was the participation of just tons of people from all over, yourselves included. If we had not had the partnership with the city, it wouldn't have happened. So, you guys should pat yourselves on the back. Staff were extremely supportive, and as a result, the town got lit up.
It was beautiful.
It was beautiful, wasn't it? I'm still basking in the glow. We had a -- so here's what happened. Eleven trees with 23 trunks were lit in Centennial Park, as well as one whole tree at the end of the bridge, the walking bridge from City Hall into the park, and the walking bridge was lit. The platform, a platform was built on the fountain, and we had a 14-foot tree, lit tree on that. Next year, we hope to have a 20-foot one. It's been donated. And we'll move the 14-foot one to another place. We have lights on kidney springs, string lights on many of the posts, the lampposts throughout town. We had 12 new four-foot snowflakes that were fabulous. Many of the active businesses were lit up. We hope to get 100% of them this year. We had a new storefront competition that The Chamber -- sponsored, thank you. That word went away. The Chamber sponsored, and we hope they'll do that again next year, too. We had the best parade ever. I have to admit that that wasn't all our fault. The weather contributed tremendously. But it was still great, just walking down through town with people just standing there watching the parade, talking to each other whether they knew each other or not. It was fabulous. Inspired many more homes to decorate than have in the past. And I think we'll try to see if somebody wouldn't like to sponsor a home decoration contest. And then I just want to mention, because I know you all care about this, as do I, vacant buildings, the windows got decorated. We had four windows in the Bodega building there across from the depot that were decorated. The Mexican Restaurant was decorated. And I should mention who did this, because this is part of the participation. PEO did two of the windows in the Bodega, Kowanis did one, and the sorority did the fourth one. In the Mexican Restaurant, Friends of Wind Cave put up a display, and that was at the very last minute, because that became vacant just before Christmas. The old Fall River Bakery, Gerald Culligan, decorated in there, as well as the two windows in the Odd Fellows Hall. The two petty building windows were decorated by CDO. Mr. Cruz decorated the Cruz Building with those flashing snowflakes. And the Johnson Building next door to City Hall had lights in it. And I want to mention that because people were, did such a great job on those vacant windows, every single group that decorated windows is in the process of redecorating those for the next season. They've all stepped up again. And I want to say also that, well, this is not a Christmas in the Hills thing. I mean, we're about the holidays. Three of us, Gail, myself, and Pex Furlough, all want those windows to stay decorated, so we've kind of volunteered to separately encourage people to do that. And we'll identify windows as we can, and we'll get folks who are interested in doing it to do so. And they're all enthusiastic about that. So, thank those folks when you get a chance. So, now we're looking at 2016. What we'd like to do is finish decorating the street, as well as doing a little bit more in Centennial Park. We want to get more snowflakes. There'll be three-foot ones instead of four-foot ones, so we make sure that we don't have trucks running into them as they park along the street. And it's going to cost us more money. Last year, I think we were around $8,000 donations that actually got spent, as well as a lot of in-kind that we did not apply a dollar figure to. This year, I think it's going to take around $12,000 to do it. We don't have the exact figures yet, but we think those decorations will cost about $400 apiece. So, we're busy already, talking to groups. We're going to try to get some money from some organizations that have more money than what individual groups have this year, since we're starting a little bit earlier. We also need money early, so those of you who might think about writing a check, you just go down to City Hall. The ladies in the front there, Mary and Barb, know how to take care of that. They'll give you a receipt, and they keep track of money separately. So, money is needed early, because we cannot order anything until we actually have the money in hand. The city is not allowed to do that. So, get your money in early, and you can come a second time. For the city, last year, the monetary donate, or the monetary amount set aside, it wasn't a donation, since all this belongs to the city. The monetary amount set aside was $500, and we'll be coming back again probably at the next meeting to talk about a new resolution, a new partnership for this next year, and also for money. So, once again, it'll probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of $500 to $1,000 that we ask for from the city. I think that's it. Questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Please.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Please let everyone know who you are.
Yeah. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of Hal Wick out at the golf course. Hal had to go back to Sioux Falls for a wedding, and so I asked if I would stop by and provide some information regarding his lot, GC38. I believe that each of you would have received a couple of handouts that show that little triangular lot. That lot is a total of 12,282 square feet. Of that, 8,880 square feet is all setbacks. So, you have 3,402 feet potential building area. This is all on a side hill. We consider it to be an unbuildable lot, somewhat similar to, I believe it was Lot 7, GC72, that you had already agreed was an unbuildable lot, although this lot is somewhat The minimum house size in that development is 1,600 square feet, excluding any garage And also, all parking, or any parking on any lot must be within a garage, so it won't be able to park in the setback areas, has to be in a garage. At the front, this lot then, with the setbacks, excuse me, setbacks, is only five feet wide. At the widest, then, the building area would be 48 feet clear at the very back. The average home size out in that whole development is at least 2,500 square feet. And that's excluding garage. I don't think there are any garages out there less than a double-wide garage. Understanding that the matter's not on the agenda tonight for any kind of action, but I'm authorized speaking for Mr. and Mrs. Wick, that they do want the three buildable lots, including the one they have their house on, all to be included in the assessment area. And they are requesting, though, that this lot be excluded as an unbuildable lot. Be glad to answer any questions. I did have some color pictures that I had, I don't know if they've gone around or not, but...
The council has received black and white copies of the triangular-shaped lot. I know Councilman Tessier has also personally gone out and taken pictures and looked at So, they're becoming aware of the situation.
In talking with Hal the other day, he told me that he would have to resurvey, and that would be at his expense. And he would combine that space of that portion on the nor, I think it's the north side.
It would have to be to the left side, because there's a cart path on the right side.
Right. To the left side would be merged into GC34. Could be.
I think, you know, I believe there were two handoffs, one just showing the lot itself, then the second one showing with the setbacks, as to what would be the building area.
That's correct.
All right.
And then a picture of the approach, the colored picture.
Yeah. And we do understand that it takes 7,500 square feet minimum to build a house in the center, according to ordinance.
And not to change the subject, but hearing Karen's comment about the home decorations, I would pledge $400, $250, $150 for three prizes for home decorations for next Christmas in the Hills.
You know how to make an exit there, Mike.
Yeah. Did you get that down, Misty? Well, didn't that make sense? It was a shock, Christmas in the Hills, but that's cool.
Glory would slap me up if I didn't.
Well, thank you for both the items and for representing Hal. I'm glad that was brought before the council. Yes, sir. I need you to come to the mic and tell everybody who you are.
I'm Terry Kaiser, and that's Deborah Yarn. We own the Smoke &amp; TND BBQ in town here. Saturday morning, I got a letter in the mail about, from the building.
Could you talk a little more into the fight?
Oh, I got a letter in the mail from the building inspector, or else I would have tried to get this on the agenda. Basically, she's reclassifying our business, and we, oh, I wrote this. We have an existing business that we established for the last three years, and this is only our fourth season in business. And before I purchased the lot, I talked to the city, before I purchased the lot to make sure I could put this barbecue on there, we had a little bit of a fight, and we come to an agreement, and I got to put the barbecue on there. Oh, we've gone three years now with no problems. Now, all of a sudden, I get this letter that before we can even open, that I got reclassified as a...
A transient merchant.
A transient merchant. And she wants a $500 deposit, plus wants me to pay $100 a month to the city for a vendor's license. I own my lot. I paid the taxes on it. We have a sales tax license, which is in that address, 239 North River Street. My mobile restaurant license is in 239 North River Street. And we hire kids during the summer to work for us and stuff. And I think we're an asset to the community, but she won't even let, we were going out in early this year, because it's been sort of nice. And according to this, I can't even do nothing up there, not pay all this.
Does Kim have your contact information? I'll talk to her tomorrow and see. I'm not aware of the letter that you received.
Would you like the letter to take a copy?
No, I'll get one from her.
One quick question for you. With the Department of Health audits you each year for health inspection, do they do so as a mobile business or as a physical?
It's a mobile business, I assume.
I'm sorry, and I hope we can get this straightened out.
I am, too.
But it just completely took me by surprise, because I talked to her two or three times last week. She never mentioned a word about it. We had this all straightened out when the other inspector was there, and like I said, we've been running smoothly for three years. We've been improving that place almost every year. And what sort of got me was she was being really nice to me and said, you know, it'd be nice to move that building to the other side and open that mural up, it would give you more room. We did all that for her, then on Saturday morning, I get this letter.
I think she's generally really good about working with established businesses. We've changed ordinances to work with them, so I think we can help you. I certainly hope so. Yeah, we'll take a look at that. The city before had you set up as a mobile restaurant? Is that what you said?
We still are a mobile restaurant, because we don't have any inside seats.
So, that's how you register with the state?
Yeah.
But you guys are stuck with us. I mean, we're there.
I'm from Kansas City, so I'm all about barbecue. I give barbecue up. I, like I said, I'm not aware of the letter. We absolutely want to do the best we can for the businesses in Hot Springs. We'll take a look at it and see, you know, maybe there's some history there that we need to make her aware of. If there's anybody here that has some history of how this...
Just allow us to do our diligence and follow up appropriately.
The guy that actually got Scott straightened out was Harley, but, you know, he passed away. He was my main backer, I guess you'd say, to get me in there. He did a lot for us.
Okay. We will look into it a little deeper and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm familiar with when you went in. I noticed you're digging now, too. Is that for water or...?
We were trying to find, we were trying to find the water in sewer line, because everyone, all the older residents, we asked them, was there a building in there? No one can remember one. But Craig Ramey says he's got a picture of one, but he's never produced it. So, we dug an experimental hole to see if we can, could find water in sewer line. And we couldn't, but we did find a footing, which, three foot down, and it was 18 inches thick and four foot wide. So, evidently, there was a sandstone building or something there at one time, and then we found another debris. But what we did, we just stuffed everything in, so that when the street comes through, we can have water in sewer.
Okay, so you're looking at water and sewer.
I can't hear you.
It's not working. Anyway. Um, so you are looking at water and sewer there, right?
Well, yeah, we want it, but they're telling me that I'm responsible to bring it up to the curb, which I've never really heard of. So right now, we're hauling our groundwater out and stuff.
Yeah, because there was issue about bathrooms and stuff like that, that we wouldn't remember.
Yeah, right. But we can't, until the city brings it by us, we can't get it.
Okay, that's what I remember, okay?
Okay.
We'll look at the history. Um, we may take it to Admin and Finance or something like that, or some committee to just get a second opinion on it as well.
Okay.
We want to move forward.
Huh?
We want to move forward.
We want you open.
Like I said, I think we're pretty...
I'm happy, Mike.
We didn't bring any of that barbecue with you in the back kitchen.
We can't start. And we're letting cookies. We're open.
But we...
I will talk to Kim tomorrow. We will just, you know, look into the history a little bit more, and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know what else I can do tonight. I didn't see the letter. I don't know what it started it, so, um, and if we need to bring it to the council to do something different, we will.
Okay, and then Kim drew us up some plans, which really turned out nice as far as we want to put one more building in there, and make it look like a gem and a little western ghost town. And she did good on all that, then all of a sudden she just...
I did see that.
It actually went to the Historical Commission and was approved by them, so I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I don't know what changed, I really don't.
Yeah, because when I went in there this morning to ask what the letter is about, she said, she just, that's it. That's what's gonna happen.
Thank you for coming.
I'll get, I'll get a copy and look at it.
Thank you.
Were there any, any other communications from the public? Chris, you want to come up to the mic?
Uh, two things. First thing is maybe sometime soon, maybe me and Cindy and Craig can have a debate. And then my other questions for the council is like, we know what's going on with the VA, but where's, what's going on with the railroad right now in Edgemont? A lot of railroaders and families live here in Hot Springs. And if we lose all those railroaders and those families, because the railroad is looking at pulling out of Edgemont, what is the plan for Hot Springs to bring in jobs to this community?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you guys.
I'm aware of some activities that are going on. I'm not sure what can be publicized at this point, but we do invest in Southern Hills Economic Development Corporation, and they're working on several different ideas that we as a city are supporting. So it's, it's definitely being addressed, and Mr. Heidelbrink actually was attending the meeting and is working with them as well.
Thanks, Chris.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm gonna move to personnel. Um, we usually do them all together unless someone's opposed to that.
I would make that motion that we do A through H together on personnel as one motion. I'll second that.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Alright, um, we are changing executive session to active agenda. Committee reports, Admin and Finance, Georgia Holmes.
I think we're out of battery on both of them. Um, yeah, we did have quite a long meeting for Admin Finance, and, uh, just a second here. We discussed adding the Assistant Finance Officer to all of our accounts so they can be signed. And um, then we had um, the VA ask for support. And a lot of these things will be on our agenda already to vote on, but it's to support the employment program, the therapeutic program for the VA. We did um, talk about grant requirements for tree planting in Centennial Park, and one of the things we have on our agenda yet is to approve that, or do whatever we're gonna do with it tonight. And also, we talked about the 2014 audit presentation, which will be scheduled for May 16th. We reviewed proposals and discussed awarding the 2015 audit services and how much that cost would be. Looked at budget workbooks and spread out so Caroline will post it, and it will be available on media. Talked about repayments for the police department. Uh, some of our officers that have gone are asking for some different payments. The tree ordinance to be vetoed by the mayor to schedule whatever, because we did some reworking of it last time. And then WSI's women's director, we would like to send some people to get that, or one person to get that, and it's $300, and also to look at an agreement that would work, so that when people left, you know, if they should leave in the midterm, here's one. And uh, let's see, the city, we talked about city charging of sales tax and how we've been doing it. And right now, we have the airport and the golf course, their taxes are being backed off, which I was not aware of.
For memberships.
For memberships. And um, as of June 1st, we have the half penny sales tax to be added on, so how the council would like to handle that.
And that's per state law.
Yes, that is. And how, but how the city council would like to handle backing off taxes and, and some of those memberships, because we do not do that at the plunge, or at the Mueller Center, or any of our other activities that we do, like the water. Um, we talked also about the South Dakota State University Extension Community Development Programs. There's a leadership program and for board training, and we would have to get money from the contingency fund if there was any training that would be done there for leadership. We did that in 2013. Boulder Falls Financing Program, um, we're gonna look at doing some updating to that tonight. We have council approval fundraisers by the enterprise funds. Uh, we talked about getting some things put on the agenda for that, so the council was aware of what was going on. The library has a copier that's going down, and so Don brought the, the information on purchasing that, and it would probably have to go into contingency fund for purchase. The different prices were given by her. And then we also had on our agenda the cost of police coverage, and Carol Anne asked for a report for it to be given for the county to, if they paid for it, if we had it the way it's going right now. And I guess that's all.
Thank you. Busy meeting.
Yeah.
Do you wanna go into the airport, or is that later this weekend?
That's okay. Airport did not have a meeting, um, but I did visit with them a little bit. They're gonna do some spraying out there, starting this week, I believe, or when it's not wet. And so, uh, they also wanted to get some of the trim painted out there, so they're looking at volunteers helping paint out there. Um, they also said, be sure and tell them we want hangers, hangers, and hangers.
Tell him to do that.
So, that was that, okay?
Okay, thank you. And the chamber meeting is Wednesday, so I'm assuming our board, uh, Carol Anne?
Uh, we'll meet May the 5th at the library at 5 o'clock. Fourth, excuse me, fourth.
Fourth. Thank you. Uh, Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Kira?
We meet this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the upper level of Evans Plunge, and I will have something to report on May 2nd.
Thank you. Krista Parks Rec, beautification and cultural development.
Well, we don't, we have a meeting, um, we only have that the first of the month, so it will be the first Monday of next month that we have a meeting. And then, um, I... And then I just, I quickly talked to Chris today about what's going on, and the Boys and Girls Club on the 23rd, Saturday, 9 to 3 o'clock, will have a three-on-three with basketball. The Glenn Miller Band was very well attended, so they'll be looking at doing more things like that in the future, which is great. And uh, this, the garden show's coming up this Saturday.
Spring fling.
Fling. Spring fling.
Thank you. Um, no P and C, so public safety, and that's later this week, right?
Public safety is Wednesday, yeah.
And public works?
Public works. We had a meeting. We talked about purchasing a laptop computer for out at the wastewater. Because of the, the quality of the air at the wastewater plant, we have a hard time keeping computers. So we're looking if we can get something that we can use and then store somewhere else other than actually at the wastewater plant. Talk about weed spraying out at the airport, and some of the areas for, um, that were farmed, and where the sludge application was put down from the wastewater, the weed spraying for those areas will be taken care of by the wastewater department. Project updates, loading dock, we're in the process of putting wiring in it, getting it ready. Albany Avenue is just about done again. Most of our concrete projects are done. Tracy's been working out of Boulder Falls, getting all those, um, new locating points. There's a drainage problem down on Garden Street that we're gonna be looking into. That has been a drainage problem for a long time. I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do down there, but we'll look into it. And that's all we have.
Alright, thank you. Georgia, anything going on the golf course?
Oh, there's all kinds of stuff going on, mainly that it's open. Um, he's really glad it rained and snowed or whatever. He's been trying to get watering done out there. They did have to fix one break, um, and they, at number one, installed air relief valves at number five. Fixed power issue on pump number two and adjusted run times and start times. They've been, they've been mowing and fertilizing, filling divots, and edging and raking and moving algae from the ponds and cleaning up everything. He's looking at doing some different activities that he doesn't have in stone yet, so he said, don't say anything yet, but he wants some training for people to be, that might be interested in starting golf and bringing somebody in to give some lessons and stuff like that. And I think that's pretty much all. Oh, be sure and look online, though, there are different schedules and things, um, for the days, and I can't remember exactly what they are right now. Monday and Wednesday, hey, you'll have to go online. I don't know, Nola maybe remember.
Yeah, we have the post at Evans, yeah, Evans Plunge has a post, and so does the City Hall Library.
Yes, they're online.
Sunday, Wednesday are good deals for locals especially. All you can golf, 2:00 PM to close for $25, I believe.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
And it boots the cart.
So, that's all.
And the other thing is our lady golfers, the students, won their tournament in Custer. So, they made us very proud. Andrea, did we have a meeting yet with them? We did, didn't we?
We did.
At the volunteer fire department.
Um, so we met on Tuesday night, and they had their annual meeting with their supper. There was a good turnout. There, they had, um, five dispatches that they reported on, with all good comments. They've installed, or will be, a total of installing 15 new LED lights in their shed. Five of them are donated by the electrician. Um, the contract with City Hall has been signed, and that does include the meters that were installed. And just last week, wait, what week is it? They did get the meters actually installed, so that is completed as well. Um, they also got three new volunteers sworn in, and those three go through a year probation and a bunch of extensive training, so I learned about that. So, yeah.
It was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting.
Good, and we're always appreciative of their services, especially getting the contract signed. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, going on to ordinances. Um, as you all are aware, I have requested with our city finance officer that, um, the ordinance number 1164, Chapter 14A, Trees, City and Forests be vetoed. We made a lot of changes between the first and second reading, and we really should only do typos and very small changes that don't affect, I'll say, the meat of the ordinance. And I believe that, um, although it was unanimous, but a majority vote for that change, I am vetoing that and would like your guidance on how to move forward now.
Motion to accept the veto and do nothing.
I'll second that.
Motion to accept the veto and do nothing?
Right.
I don't agree.
She's open to discussion. I have a motion and a second, so discussion on doing nothing after the veto.
I believe we should have a first reading on the ordinance again.
I didn't hear what you said.
I believe we need to have a first reading on the ordinance over.
I second that.
Wait, we're discussion. We'll do a vote on the first, on the do nothing. Any other discussion on the veto and do nothing?
I think right now, we need to go back into this and, and compare it to what we've already got, and do some, some more looking at it. We received a letter from an arborist, that he brought up some very good points on this. An outside gentleman.
Larson?
Bill.
And I, and I don't...
Bill Peterson.
Was in your hallway, hold there.
I think his name is Bill Peterson.
Yeah.
He was from David City, Nebraska.
He's part of the Parks and Recs, but he can't come all the time, but he's not a citizen of...
I need you to speak in your mic.
And he, he has come to some of the Park and Rec meeting. He isn't a citizen, but he does come to the Park and Recs, and he's the one that I did refer to, and so, yeah. I think he was there when you came.
I didn't hear him speak.
I don't think he was there. It was two minutes before that.
Okay.
I would like to...
Please speak into your mics, counsel.
I'd like to accept the veto. We, we voted on this, and it was passed at the last meeting, so I would recommend that we accept the veto and propose another first reading.
We already have a motion.
Yeah, alright, I'm gonna do a vote on the mo- the veto and do nothing, because I have a motion and a second.
I would also like to just share with, um, that one of the things that has not been discussed and people are not aware of is that this is gonna cost over $7,000 a month, a year, to have this, um, and be a tree city. So, um, that has never been discussed at any time, which I think needs to come out as well.
Okay, so...
I have a clarifying, that's a little bit misleading the way it was stated. What the Tree City does is requires four things that has been discussed. One of the boards, you have to spend
There was no money discussed.
Capital, sorry, I'm still $2,000 per capita for trees in your community. The city of Hot Springs has already spent that in 2014, 2015, and will spend that in 2016. That's a pretty easy number for us to get to. Tree care covers edits from tree removal, tree pruning. That includes both machinery cost and labor cost, and salary cost too. So to get to that 7,000 threshold is pretty easy to do. We've already done it here every year.
And it was mentioned before, several times.
Okay, if there's no further comments, I am going to request a vote on accepting the veto and doing nothing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a roll call, please.
Hey, can we restate what we're voting on?
Yes, please.
Sure.
We, my understanding of the motion and second is that we accept the veto and do nothing.
Carl Lachley?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
And Krista Svaline?
No.
You have five no's and two yeses. Four and three, I'm sorry.
Motion. Is it five and?
Four to three.
Motion fails.
I would now request a motion, or make a motion that we have a, an additional first reading and second reading on this ordinance.
I second that.
To clarify, you should make the motion that, to accept the veto and schedule a first reading for tonight. You can't guarantee a second one of those first readings, so just
So, the new motion is to accept the veto and plan a first, a next
Can you do the first reading?
Can you do that? Add a motion to accept the veto and do nothing.
But that failed.
Pardon, no, it failed.
That failed.
No, it failed.
It failed. It failed. So we're trying again. And Carl proposed the motion, and Georgia seconded it, that we accept the veto and doing another first reading.
Tonight.
Can we do, I don't think we can do it tonight, 'cause we have to notify, right?
It's on the agenda, it's not a notification. It's on the agenda, and it is in the public packet. It's in the binder in the back.
Okay, so the motion is to do a first reading now, tonight, tonight. Okay, discussion on that.
We have a second.
Yep.
Yeah, Georgia seconded it.
Could, could you go over some of the changes, one of you guys, please, from the last time when we did?
Are there changes in this handout that we received?
They're the same that Andrea read aloud at the last meeting.
One of the big questions was the city administrator being involved. It's the tree board, the head of it, basically. And how we turned that up is by going in consultation with a certified arborist or a community forester, and that's included in there still, like Andrea read last time. Also talks about the city stating that they can care for its own trees. That's been removed per recommendation of the councilman Kramer. And we also had a change, a modification, of requiring the city do all firewise management. Given the trees we have, it poses thus the liability as perceived. So that was removed also. Instead of requiring citizens to follow firewise, it's recommending to citizens to follow firewise.
Next time when you, next time when you do this, can you do it and read the changes or something crossed out? Oh, last time you did, yeah, okay.
I would also, uh, 14A, uh, 020, the tree, city tree board, and reading the information that I got from Nolan, we can have a committee, we don't have to have a board. And I was told that, and it says in here, the city Parks and Recs committee. We already have a Parks and Recs committee.
Correct.
Then why don't we take out everything there except A, and just establish that you have a Parks and Recs committee? Why do we need?
We have to
What, Nolan, I'm talking.
Sure, thanks.
We have, like, E is the city administrator, she'll be the city tree manager, and also a member of the board. And I have a problem with that. Usually, a city employee is not a voting member of a board. And I don't know why we need to set up a board if we already have a committee, and there's nowhere in the documents that states we have to have a board rather than a committee.
I think if you reread the documents I provided, it does state that it asks to establish a tree care committee or board. The word board and committee can be interchangeable, but the group has to be charged with caring or developing a plan for the community's trees. So whether it be called a committee or a board, that's arbitrary in this aspect. Where Parks Board is really matters is in state law. You call the Parks Board, then they have spending authority. But the tree committee, tree board, there's nothing attached there to the first. So that word is interchangeable.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that
Tree City USA does state that it needs to be a tree committee or tree board dedicated to that purpose. So that's why it's broken up.
All right, all I'm saying is, then, you know, I would like to see it left as a committee, not as a new board for the city.
Under the first reading, then, we can act, actually ask for that to be changed to
Yes, you can.
I don't see that being a substantial change to it, so that'd be a fair modification to make.
As Tim had mentioned earlier, this letter that we received from Mr. Peterson, um, he has been our worst of the year. Um, he has dealt with these sort of things in the past, and I feel like we should, um, hear what he has to say, and also, um, his suggestions here. It says combining of the other ordinances, deal with the trees, should also be considered as this reduces confusion and duplications. Um, there should be the park or the street superintendent, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, there's a lot of things in here that has some really good, um, suggestions, and I think that this is something that needs to be looked at. I'm sorry, you guys didn't get it.
Yeah, I got the letter, and, um, I, I agreed that there was some very good valid links, and I kinda went over that with Nolan, and, um, some, we are going to press forward with some of his suggestions, but they just won't be part of the ordinance as all.
Why would not, why would they not be?
Well, because if we actually put in, one of the, his suggestions that I liked was that you would have a list of suggested trees, and I thought that was a really good idea. And I talked to Nolan about it, and, um, after we talked back and forth for a while, it, that would be better if we didn't put it in the ordinances, because then, like, for instance, if you're, um, suggesting in an ordinance that a suggested tree is elm, and you have a glide, like, L-glide, then that's part of the ordinance, where if you just had a separate sheet, you could change it without having to change the ordinance. So, we did that.
In his letter, he references that, in their ordinance, they spell out what trees are recommended. We reviewed their ordinances, and that's not what the ordinance does. There's actually an inaccuracy there. What our ordinance calls for is that we develop as a tree committee a comprehensive plan for the community that includes care of non-alien street or city trees, but also recommendations to the public. Cover what trees to plant, recommendations what trees not to plant in this area based on the climate and different disease types, and also things like annual pruning, when's the best time to prune your tree, mulching, how close do I get my mulch to the tree root base, or how far would it mulch out? So that's where we really fill the details of how to care, excuse me, care for your trees.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna try again on stating the motion. It was to accept the veto and consider tonight the first reading again. So, all in favor?
Aye. Is this with the changes that I mentioned? With the changes that I asked for?
Board becomes committee.
Board becomes a committee, and that we take out B.
That's the emotion.
That's pretty significant, then, if you're taking out a whole section.
Yeah. Well, because we, that's, that's, this is for a board. Terms, compensation, organization.
That's very standard for tree ordinances, tree city ordinances. In fact, that's what David City has, that's what Custer Rapids City all
You, you had told me that the Parks and Rec Committee was going to be the committee over this.
Correct, but the Parks and Rec Committee doesn't have terms or this, this establishment. Our Parks and Rec is pretty loosely associated with people that care about the parks.
But that's all that's required. You're not required, uh, this other part, in, in any paper you gave me.
This helps people to be accountable.
I think we need to do a separate vote for that, because my understanding of the motion and the second was that we are accepting the veto and that we are, we are proposing a first reading as it is.
Right.
And if that fails, then let's go to first reading with changes? I don't, I think it's too significant, I'm gonna veto it again.
If you can make a motion that by the second reading, it board be changed to committee.
That's all I'm doing, is adding that. But even if it passes, that by the next reading, that that would be included.
That the board be changed to committee.
Yes.
Is that a significant change, significant enough for us to have
Well, she's already wanting to, I see it at X over, at least a third of the page.
The, the board, the committee would not be, the X over a third of the page would be.
Right, so
And that's not a part of my motion to begin that.
Right, so, Carol Anne, let me finish, if you're okay with it. I would like to continue the vote for accepting the veto and accepting tonight as the first reading of the document you have before you as it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I need a vote again, Mr.
I think it's four to three again, but, um, Carl Lachley?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Krista Svaline?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Krista, you said yes, you, you wanted, okay. Tim Tesher?
No.
Thank you. Caroline Swartzenbach? Did I get everything?
Four to three.
Yeah, I did, I'm willing.
Yeah, Georgia said yes.
Okay, so Carl said yes, Andrea said no, Krista said yes, Kara said yes, Tim said no. So four to three again.
Four to three.
So that motion also failed.
Now that motion
No, it carried.
Pass.
Four to three. Yeah. It passed.
I thought the other one was four to three.
It was.
But it was the other way.
Oh. Okay. So we just approved the first reading. Okay. And then we'll have an opportunity to make modifications. Carol Anne, please make sure that your concerns are addressed. And I think I'm gonna move forward in the agenda.
I think to do that, it actually has to be through a motion to amend the ordinance at this time, I think.
Yeah, we're having a first reading right now, actually.
Yes, she needs to give it now. Tell us what, line him, tell us what you want.
So since we're agreeing to do the first reading, okay, now you can comment.
Yeah, ask them the public, if they so choose.
If they so choose, yes. Okay, so we are taking comments.
I think
Did you capture Caroline's?
With him as part of the board, all that.
I've lost, I'm
No, to amend, to, I, it probably won't pass, but I can make a motion to amend the ordinance, to change it from a board to a committee. The Parks and Rec Committee will be over that. And the mayor appoints members of that. You have how many on the Parks and Rec Committee now? Two councilmen and some other people? Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably five.
Is that right? You actually have some citizens you've appointed to that, different than other committees, right? There, there are no other committees that citizens are appointed to?
No, that's not
Yeah, there is, and, yeah, the plunge has.
Yeah.
The plunge, but that's Kara's committee, that she took those people for.
Well, that's the plunge, that's the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee.
But they're only, Georgia's only on that. And my point is that we do have some citizens appointed to this.
And that we can't have a first reading, because we've gotta set up a first reading. It's not advertised that we will have a first
You don't advertise first readings.
You don't advertise first readings.
Do you publish it out?
Make motions and stuff all the time.
This is when it, if I'm gonna make a motion to amend the first, then this is the time to do it. That's my motion.
Yes, that is correct.
Did we capture Caroline's comments?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
It wasn't one. It's discussion. It's to just, A, establish, uh, that the city and Parks and Rec Committee is hereby designated as the, whatever, take off as the tree board, consisting of members appointed by the mayor with approval of the council. That's my motion.
That's what it says already. No, she wants the board taken out. So you're line 28, where it says city tree board, you want that to be as a committee?
Committee.
And in line 30, you want board taken out, is that right?
And take out B. Because you don't need that, 'cause you already have the committee. You don't need terms and compensation and organization.
I think it'd be prudent to ensure that stays, 'cause otherwise you
I've made a motion, Nolan, to take it out.
Okay, if that's so approved, then we have two degrees of ordinance. Does that be a substantial change to it?
That's what you do when you amend an ordinance. That's what you do.
Can we, for the sake of, accept her comments, and then analyze it for the next meeting, for the full council to determine if that's what they want?
I make a motion, I table this until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Was there a second on that?
Well, finish what you're saying, what line?
It's seconded by Andrea.
All right, let's, let's keep one person talking at once. We have a motion by Carol Anne, and a second by Andrea. That's a motion we have to act on now.
That's fine, we need a motion, we need to know what it is.
It's in A on line 28 or 29, but then, Section B of 14.8.02, describe terms, compensation, and organization.
Nolan, if you'd let me state this, uh, for the committee removing, uh, the word board in A, making it just the Parks and Rec Committee.
That's it, no striking?
Uh, take out the word board.
All right, that's easy.
Yeah.
So committee becomes board.
Right. And B.
Caroline, Caroline, I have the line numbers.
You gotta verify, you gotta verify what A was.
Caroline, we have numbers, can you just state the numbers on the line?
The line number.
The line number. So it's 29, is that right?
Uh, 28.
Well, on my page, I've got about five copies of this.
There's, there's two ordinances in your packet. The first one's the one that is vetoed, and the second one is the one that would be reconsidered for a first reading.
It has the lines on it.
Yeah.
The numbered lines. Could you please state the numbered lines?
Page 29 is the most current one. Or line 29.
Each number's Okay.
I have 29, uh, it's 14A, it's city tree board, and I'm just changing that to committee. Making a motion to do that. To amend the, um, ordinance.
Okay, what about striking out B? 'Cause you've added that, and after you say that, you say and B.
And part of, that's part of my motion.
To remove Section B. Okay, so that would be
Line 32 through 41.
Another first reading.
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think you're accurate.
That's actually correct.
That's what our lawyer told us with the last one.
I know, I've got her letter right here.
So, if we don't remove B, then we're just changing committee and board, and that's
But, but we, that was at the second reading that we did that. We passed something that had been significantly changed. We're making the changes now in the first reading, whatever it is, significant or otherwise. Then when you, uh, come to the second reading, it will read this, and whether it's passed or not.
That's what we did the last time, it just requires another first reading when you make a significant change.
If, we should've had another first reading at the second reading last time.
Because the changes between the first and the second.
Yes.
And we'll have
It becomes a first once you change. So if you don't change, it becomes a second. Okay? We can change now, and then we'll have a second, and then We can change now, and then we'll have a second, and then if we don't change, it'll be okay.
Same, okay.
Could we clarify?
I'm against that, actually, so. We have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
I'm, I have a motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, Andrea, a second.
Oh, we have a motion.
We're just confused.
We're good.
So we have a motion and a second to change board to committee and remove B and everything under it, is that what we're voting on? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you open it for discussion?
No.
Because it looks.
I was gonna say we didn't.
Did you wanna say something before the vote?
Yes, I did. So, am I to understand this correctly, you're gonna have compensation now for this committee?
No.
No. Says members of boards shall serve without.
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 What the motion was, was to remove that by Caroline.
Okay, that's why, I just wanted to be real clear.
She's removing that section.
Remove that.
Okay.
Why don't you do a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, we have a motion to change board to committee and remove all of item B. Carl, Ashley?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Tim Tesher?
Sure.
Krista Scoline?
No.
We have three yeses of board, noes. Motion failed.
Pardon?
Motion failed.
Motion failed. Come on in, take another stab at this tonight, or are we gonna lock?
We carry the accept.
It's done. It's done.
It would be the first reading and we can go the next time, the second.
There'll be a second, there'll be a second.
So we will. And it needs to be a public hearing. At the next time, at the next time, at the next reading.
It's like tonight, if you open the public to comment, there's no hearing scheduled.
Now, there won't be a hearing, there'll be a second reading. Okay, so we're done with the first reading. Thank you for that good discussion. All business action on bid for coverage stage for the Centennial Park that we talked about on the second of April.
I make a motion that we not accept the bids and we, um, forestall any activity on this until after budget time.
I second that.
There are a bunch of seconds, just pick one of us.
Do you have one, Misty?
Take your pick, Misty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. New. New business, discussion and possible motion to allow valet parking at Red Rock River Resort.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
How are we going to accomplish this and what does DOT say about it?
It says right there on your paper.
I know what it says here on the paper, but we don't have anything in writing from DOT.
Do you have the property order in attendance, Joe, you wanna respond to that question?
I didn't bring the letter with me, but I have.
You had the conversation with Bridge, I think you'd be able, all right, to speak off end.
Yeah, he, uh, he, he gave me permission to do that off of 385 and stuff, so long as we put the signs up and just in front of our building and stuff.
There's some special conditions listed on the bottom, signed by Rich Locker at the DOT, or it says that. City council approval required, no fee may be charged for valet parking signs, designating valet parking must be behind curb.
And where is the valet parking gonna be?
Right in front of our hotel there on North River Street.
Where are you gonna take the cars to park them at?
Well, we probably, wherever we can, in town, like in the public, we're thinking probably like over by the volunteer fire department and not parking out there if there's room.
Centennial Park.
Yeah, Centennial Park Parking, yeah.
So essentially, the DOT has permitted this conditionally upon city approval, a lot of what the DOT does is a grant approval pending council approval, so authorize this, it kinda falls on your shoulders.
Well, when we have all the road we're going through in there, you're not gonna be able to park anyway, so.
Joe?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I, I, this is one of the questions I asked you when you got your liquor license, if you had issues with parking, and it's important that we know that you can handle your parking, so.
I was wondering if there, if there's a problem there on North River Street, can we put valet parking on National? Can we have the valet parking on National Street there by where the Evans is?
Well, that's a separate issue because that's a city street as opposed to the state road. And tonight, we're discussing the state road. We have to stick to the agenda unless they wanna change it. So you would put up signs just during events or all the time?
Yeah, during our larger events.
Larger events?
Not a, you know, but like in June when we have the, the grand gala for the South Dakota and stuff, we might have to, you know, accommodate.
You're gonna need more.
To have to park them and stuff, so.
So if we do this, I have another question alongside of that now, is if you have a person come up and they want the valet parking, your valet is going to take the vehicle from Red Rocks over to Centennial Park and park it over there, are we then gonna have to designate a specific area for them to park in?
No, it'd be open parking, it's public parking, so it's first come, first served.
I understand that, but valets normally have a specific area to park in.
We're not a big city, I think.
Well, I understand that, okay.
From our standpoint, we'd have heard against that, just given it's a public space with like full access, anybody who wants to use it, maybe they're there for service, parking, or.
My, my only concern is if we, I mean, if you park it over there, I know there should be more parking, but to park just anywhere on the street so that it blocks other parking for other businesses, I wouldn't approve that, but where you go to Centennial Park, I think that's a good one. I'll make a motion that it be accepted.
We already have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion, I can.
Okay.
Is this gonna close the parking in front of your business, other than just valet?
We would just have that certain area, just we'd be valet parking.
So it's just, so that area won't be open to the public anymore to park?
Well, just during certain events, not all, you know, if we have a, if we have a full crowd, then.
I guess I call for a vote then.
I'm just making sure there's no other questions. You need to go to the mic, Chris?
I've got a question for him.
Okay.
My question is, before, before whoever hires the valet, will the valet be, will have like a background check from the police department, make sure that he doesn't like steal their cars?
Do the responsibility of the business responsible.
Joe, you wanna answer that?
Well, yeah, it would be our responsibility, I mean, we'd have to make sure they have licenses and stuff. And I guess if they went to steal the car, I guess we would be responsible for doing the valet.
Well, if, I, I guess if DOT says that they're gonna allow it along 385, um, and they just need the city approval on it, I don't know how that's gonna work when they tear it up.
We're all gonna need valet. Any other questions for Joe or in general? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, you have valet parking now? Or tomorrow? Thank you, council, supporting the business. Item B, discussion and possible, possible motion to use contingency funds to supplement library budget for copier from Dakota Business Center, and you have the bids from Don Johnson, our library director, in your packet.
Motion to approve the items in $225.40.
Georgia seconded, discussion?
Yeah.
Tim beat you.
Go for it, Tim.
I guess, um, you know, the question I have is, I was always under the impression that contingency funds were emergency funds.
Her copier is quitting.
She makes about $4,000 a year from this copier, so we will get, it does generate money.
It comes back.
And therefore, we considered it important to her business.
Okay, but I just, like I say, I was always under the impression that contingency funds were emergency funds, so.
We kinda considered it an emergency. Right?
Apparently it was a recommendation of Admin and Finance. Did you have a comment in the back row there? Okay, just checking. Any other comments?
I just wanna make sure he said estimate to, the one, the Dakota Business Center, right?
Yeah, that's what he made. Could I ask how old the last copier was? I don't know.
Yeah, that's a great question, I wish we would've asked Don, but the service, if there's a service contract on it, and the last time he was up, he said they can no longer get parts for it, it'd be the last time he could fix it. I could find the age though for you, but I have a feeling it's pretty old. It's old, but.
The quality of it, it really does.
And it is used pretty heavily by the public, I mean, it's, it's a service that the library provides.
They're new and.
It's old enough to only do black and white, single sided copies.
I wasn't aware of the, um, the revenue that it brought in, so that's good, otherwise I was, my question was gonna be, why would we not lease something, um, you know, for $140 a month?
She compared lease options, it was more than.
It was more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, discussion and possible motion to use 2250 of contingency funds to supplement planning administrator budget for matching funds for the housing needs study program through the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. And for those of you that don't have all the comments, um, it costs a total of $7,500, of which the city would need to cover half, and if approved by the council, the Hot Springs Housing Authority has offered to donate $1,500.
I'll make a motion that we.
I'll second that.
Take that.
Discussion.
The housing authority want, they've done some work on, um, what kind of houses are needed here in Hot Springs, since for the working people, it's, one of the things they find is a shortage, and there's a lot of different parts to that, but I do think it's something that we need to have done, and it, for us to be able to pay, you know, that small of an amount, it's, it's gonna do us a good service.
My question on this is, is this study going to say you need to do, this is what you've gotta do to eliminate the problem, or is this another study that's gonna say, by golly, you got a problem?
I hope it's more than.
You know, we've got, we've, right now, we've got a whole drawer full of studies somewhere that says, yep, you got a problem.
Well, we've got Greg here, I would like to hear from Greg. Greg, can you come up and talk just a little bit about this?
The, the proposal that Kim put forward for this is, um, is an outfit out of Minneapolis area, um, that has done a lot of these housing surveys for, um, other communities in the state. The initial report is what you're suggesting, Tim. It is a study saying what we have now and what opportunities we may have for developing new housing. But, given that, there were two comments made at the committee meeting last week. One was that Governor Dugard is critically clear about need for, for workforce housing in Fall River County in Hot Springs. So I don't think he wants it to sit in a desk drawer anywhere. The second thing is that.
Doesn't he pay for it?
He is.
Well, South Dakota Development Housing Authority.
I mean, all of it.
Well, they're, they're splitting the costs, is what the proposal from SDHDA is. The second thing is, is that the Housing Commission is looking at alternative housing developments in Hot Springs and, and greater Fall River County to include workforce housing and, uh, special needs housing if it shows up on the housing survey as a need. So I don't think that in the near future, that the study would, would end up in a desk drawer and cost the city, uh, this, this amount of money to sit.
I guess, you know, that's what, we have all these studies, we're always doing a study or a survey of some kind, and fact is, I, I just got one from our, our fire prevention, our FEMA people, this week that was done in 2010, it's been sitting in a drawer, and I asked where it is, and the gal down at city office says, well, yeah, I think I've seen that, and it was redone in 2014. So this is, you know, do we need to put out another $2,200 for another study that say, yeah, you need housing, and, or are we gonna have somebody that's gonna say, you need to build this house, you need to put this apartment, so this is how you go about doing it, rather than coming in and saying, yeah, you've got a housing problem? We tried to give property to one of these housing organizations, and guess what? It's still sitting there very empty, they haven't done nothing, and that's been years ago. So, I mean, that's the problem I have with some of this stuff, is we just keep throwing money after study, after study, after study, and they don't go nowhere. They tell us just exactly what we already know, so why do we need another study?
Can I say something, Tim? One of the important parts of this would be to encourage developers to come in and start doing something here, and when they get an, um, idea of what they need, then they look at those things. If they can bring it in and fulfill a need, they're gonna be more likely to come in and do it.
That's what I'm saying, are they gonna say, this is what we need to do, or is the bottom line of the study gonna say, yep, you got a housing problem?
That's not the way it was presented to us. I understand where you're coming from, I feel the same way you do about all these studies, because they're like reinventing the wheel, but this study, the way it was explained to us, it's reasonable, what George is saying, it's for developers, it's for people to come in and they wanna see a study like this, and then hopefully they'll come in and build here. And, and Kim cited other cities that had benefited from this.
As long, you know, as long as it's something that's gonna benefit us, and it's not just gonna end up another 15 page study stuck in a drawer someplace that says, yeah, you've got a housing problem, and five years down the road, I probably won't be here, but some of these people may be, and they're gonna say, yep, we need to do another study.
One, one of the things Dakota Rising is doing is putting all those studies together in one, and Kim is really working hard on those, so that people are aware of what we have had, and hopefully then we can start doing something with them productively, so I agree with you.
I know, but I talked to Kim today, and she said that what she's putting together is a five to 10 year plan down the road.
Well, it's important to do both.
We're gonna have another five to 10 year plan.
It's important for us to do all of that, because we got a lot of plans, you're right.
Okay.
Either add something new or move forward. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Any new comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion and possible motion to sign right of first, oh, this is after executive session. Never mind, skipping to item, or skipping the other.
Oh, wait, it is the last one.
Yeah, skip that. I'm going to. Motion to set a hearing for a new retail on off sale malt beverage license for smoking TD barbecue for May 2nd. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, motion to set a hearing for the resolution of necessity for the assessment of properties located within the Boulder Falls development for May 2nd.
So move.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, discussion and possible motion to add Assistant Finance Officer Karen Bingley to city checking and savings accounts at Wells Fargo and Bank of the West. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I think those that are on signing will have to re-sign that same card, right, Misty?
Yeah, we'll get what the banks and get what's required.
Tim, Carl, we'll need you to help with that. Item I, discussion and possible motion to approve memorandum of agreement for compensated work therapy program partnership with the BA, Black Hills Health Services Therapeutic Support Employment Program.
So moved. We accept it.
Carl and Tim, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion back to the...
Just for information is, we actually have a city employee that we originally started out on this program, and he's been a really good employee.
It's a very good, strong program that the BA has.
And we want to support our veterans, but I'm neutral. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item J, discussion and possible motion to authorize signature of Department of Agricultural Tree Grant Acceptance Form. Send your packet.
I have a motion. Second.
Discussion. I want to know what trees you're going to take out.
It's the, you're looking at the park from facing the bathroom to the parking lot.
I'm looking at this.
It's your third tree from the left from the bathrooms. And if you look at it close to choke cherry tree...
Is it along the, is it one of the cedars?
No, no, cedar's the other side of that map. The choke cherry tree is on the parking lot side. It's the third one from your left, and it has insect infestation base. If you look at it close, about eighty percent of the trunk is bitten apart by ants.
Yeah, at the meeting the other day, you mentioned taking out the cedar trees along the river.
Well, as the new trees are going to develop in about twenty years, then you'll have to start looking at space and sunlight. That's when they'll start competing. This plan calls for the shade canopy. Unfortunately, we were dealing with the overhead wire on the choke cherry, so those will be the smaller tree species. But on the opposite side, the long-term plan would be to phase out those evergreens with the deciduous, correct?
And are you going to leave them alone? Because the people at the parks at the fair use those trees.
Correct.
Are they going to leave, be left alone?
We plan to possibly prune them up a little bit so they're more symmetrical. If you look at them, the side on the park has been pruned up, and the side of the river has not been. And so, we're advised to prune them up, but those will stay until the new trees are old enough to replace them with a new generation of trees.
And maybe none of us will be here then.
Perhaps.
Are you planting them for fire wise?
We are, yes. Basically, we had a community forester come down and walk and sign for this, and then he recommended these locations based on the species type and how plants mature, and also what it's competing for, for space and nutrients and moisture.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K, discussion and possible motion to use Donna Danker and Associates for the twenty-fifteen audit services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item L, discussion and possible motion to approve temporary alcoholic beverage license application from Woolies Western Grill for the Joe Mueller Retirement Party at the Mueller Civic Center on June fourth. So moved. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M, as in Mary, travel requests from... You have combined M and N?
Together?
I would love to. M and N. Mary and Nancy, travel requests.
I got a question.
We need a motion in a second first.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, I got a question. If our city administrator is going to school and spearfish, why is the lodging going to be impaired?
Those notes are backwards.
I was just going to say, I think they're backwards.
Minus the note, that's the city there.
Okay.
So, the city attorney is not seeking any reimbursements, just permission to be there that day, and Captain Wayne Mann would be requesting lodging and travel?
Well, he actually, he has lodging provided by the academy. That's a no cost.
Right.
No reimbursement, that's all.
Even better.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, both travel requests.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Do we need a motion to go into executive session? I'll make that. Unless you want to do reports first. Your meeting. I did not hear what you decided. Go to finance officer, since I'm not getting a motion for executive session.
Have you got a motion for that, Drew? Ready for the finance officer?
If we have a motion to go into executive session...
We need a motion in a second first.
And a second.
Do we vote on that and say it over?
I did not hear either of those.
Yeah, but I didn't capture who made that motion.
Who made it?
Carol Ann made it.
You made a motion to go into executive session, and...
Andrea said...
If we wanted to do reports first, then the vote would be against. If you want to go in and do reports after, then the vote would be in favor.
Well, she's, she made the motion for now, so I'm going to take a vote for now for executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recession. We will return and take...
Well, it's not a bad picture.
Nine oh seven. Uh, motion was Carol Ann, and I don't... And she's second. All right, we are back in regular council meeting, and the two items that we need to do a vote on are the first right of refusal of Evan's apartment. And that is, which I...
D.
Item D under new business.
Make a motion to sign it.
Motion, Tim, second, Georgia. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, discussion and possible motion to approve wastewater holding pond contract. Motion to approve.
Second.
Carl and, I guess Andrea out this time. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The city hall tomorrow before we decide.
Thank you, Jane, and here for sticking around, Greg. The other... For item C, no action will be taken except for a letter to Mr. Norton. And there will be no decision on the added item personnel.
D.
D. And Misty, finance officer report.
Not very many people left to give my report today.
Here's the Hot Springs.
All right. Georgia Holmes and myself will be attending the Consolidated Board of Equalization meeting tomorrow, April nineteenth, at one o'clock. I'm looking forward to that. Georgia's seasoned and experienced, but this will be my first one. Sounds like we're going to most definitely have a second meeting, so I look forward to going with you, Georgia, and thank you for being our representative there. I also wanted to mention how excited I am about all the positive things that are happening in our community right now. And we're seeing so much progress and things moving in the right direction, in a good direction, in a positive direction, and that is the result of the action that you all take and the input that we have from the community that's left here. So, just wanted to mention that. It's been a while since I said anything about how good things are going and how much cleanup we've done, and I appreciate all your work and effort on that. By the next meeting, you'll see a resolution for contingency transfers for the things that have been approved, both at this meeting and previously this, in the year, and then our first for the year supplemental appropriation ordinance for expenses that you've approved previously. We decided to wait because of the publication requirements to do those in two groups throughout the year, so look forward to that on the next agenda. And please ask any questions that you have of me as you review those, and we'll vote on those at the next meeting, so keep your eye out for those. Open enrollment period for all the city insurance providers is happening right now. I mentioned that at our department head meeting. I just wanted to mention it again, that this is our month for open enrollment, and our Blue Cross Blue Shield rates have gone down by seventeen point four-three percent from last year, so that's exciting, because usually I don't see those kind of bills go down. Just wanted to mention that our departments are prepared for the change in the state sales tax effective June one. That was the House Bill eleven eighty-two that was voted on to increase the state sales tax by half a percent, and so our departments are prepared and ready to make that change effective June one. We've been doing a lot of talking about sales tax lately, as Georgia had mentioned, and being prepared for that. By the time it starts is something that's priority. We're ready for it. And then you also heard, Georgia mentioned, a little bit about an SDSU leadership and board development training opportunity that's available through the Community Development Program. That was mentioned in your Municipal League Magazine. If you read through that, that's where I got the trail for that. We did have a leadership training in Hot Springs last in two thousand and thirteen, and the people I reached out to said that was very well-attended. I see an opportunity for a lot of city employees and this board to work and grow together through that type of program, and I think that that would be a huge impact with a very little expense. And you'll be hearing more about that after election. Would be a good time, I think, for us to look into having or hosting those types of trainings. So, that's what I've got for this meeting. By the next meeting, you'll see some more numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Appreciate it. Nolan. City Administrator report.
Like last time and meetings before, I do have a list for you all to take home and review. It's a more thorough, extensive. I said it all. Tonight would be a pretty late-night for us, so I encourage you to definitely read through that. One thing not on here, though, is I want to bring up donations. We do have a new donation acceptance policy, where if those from the public sector want to, sorry, private sector want to donate to us, we have set the bin following that policy. Just tonight, we had a very generous donation brought up to us for fifteen hundred dollars for that study, so we'll go with that same policy. Part of that is informing you, the council, of how we accept those, so definitely check your packets. I do know last week, or was it, last week it was, that we accepted dirt, a dirt donation off a council member's property, and you guys were all briefing that in your council or your hallway packets. But basically, the city approached, just to provide accurate full facts here, the city approached the council member, city being our maintenance foreman, about potential filled dirt for the golf course hole number eleven canyon. And so, seeing that we had a potential for filled dirt there, our city could remove that, relocated it to hole number eleven, and so it was a win-win for all of us. It was free dirt for the city, a valuable over a thousand dollars approximately. And then also, we got to fill in a canyon that was eroding away. So, I know I've heard comments that, oh, city personnel is doing individuals' favors in the council. That's not at all what's going on. We did document the whole process. We're a small community, so a lot of us are helping each other, and this was, in our case, a win-win for the city, and Moxon Springs, I'm sure benefited from it too, but more so, the city looked out for itself and gave the student this donation. That said...
Before you move on to the rest of that, I did have a phone call about that. This person stated that the state home offered all the dirt that we needed, so why didn't we take that dirt instead of moving care of dirt?
So, to provide information on that question, the state home did not provide that, that offer to us. An employee of theirs did erroneously. He did not have the authority to do that.
Yeah, Carol Ann, we really need to kibosh that, because the state home has no authority to do that.
And where the mayor's coming from is, it's kind of a black act, the state at home to hear that they offered that, because they'd get some pretty good trouble.
Then it needs to be spoken publicly, and then... The state home did not offer dirt to the city of Hot Springs. I know. I have said they did. I said that someone, who said they did.
And an individual that knows that did previously.
So, that was not factual. That is not factual. Then that needs to be...
Can I clarify something? I paid my tractor worker to sort through the dirt to take out the extra rock that I wanted to keep. The city did not do that. All they did was come in, load up ten truckloads of dirt, and then go. Is that a thousand dollars per truckload?
That's what he said in your paper, I think.
We got a great deal of them accounted. That's how we received that information.
And filling in the canyon on hole eleven is part of our golf course master plan, so we're implementing that plan.
I would have happily kept it, but I'm also happy to donate it.
Do you want it back?
I just don't see what the problem is here.
There's, from our perspective there, thank you for the donation. As to anyone who lends to the city, we're very appreciative of it.
There's lots of golf holes in that canyon.
Not at all, baby.
There are golf holes, yes.
Other updates, we had a lot of grant activity going on. We submitted our RTP grants for the Butler Park additional trails there along the park master plan. We're also in communications with, it's turned on to us by Winkie National Park. Actually, the National Park Service offers a grant advisement for new trail development, so if we're looking to extend the Freedom Trail, Evan's plunge to the Shetapo Parks, they provide advisement to us. That probably would be a twenty-seventh application for a twenty-eighteen project, given their timeline. We've made good contact there. Captain Wayne with the Police Department, he's applied for multiple grants. Maureen Foal, Tim will be at the Public Safety Meeting. A lot of the grants are looking to apply for. They may need supplemental funding to do it, do so, but what we'll get, if approved, is a great discount of items they wanted at last year's budget season, including new radar and new cameras. Both were high priorities. These are dash cams, so high priorities of their twenty-sixteen budget request, getting them, us getting them a much reduced rate. We've got some concrete projects wrapped up, Fern Circle, the golf course, that curb has been poured. We're talking with James Ford Ward about possibly Sixth Street, where you brought up, Tim. Having that one section addressed, his concern there, though, is if he fixes one section, he actually should fix the whole section, meaning a small job to our eyes is actually like a six-thousand-dollar job.
You're going to have to bid that out, no?
It'd be underbid, but we have the DOT project coming up too in twenty-twenty that's going to tighten that, so how much do we want to reinvest into an aesthetic fix that the DOT might be fixing for us? It's kind of a cost trade-off there. Other things, our park bathrooms are opened up in some areas. Butler Park has been opened up to help the soccer kids have a place to use the restrooms. We'll be working on Centennial Park as the weather warms up. Today was kind of a rough day to get a lot of outside work done. We also are working with the Brookside Bathroom, getting a site plan established. We've located our water and sewer hookups. They're both really nearby, which is great news for us. Now, we dropped off a plan of pro builds to price out the block and finishing the inside of it. I do believe on May second, the Rotary Club does have a grand opening scheduled for the potty...
Potty on the path.
Potty on the path, it's around five, five-thirty PM. It'll be a pretty, pretty good to do about opening the new restroom behind the facility here.
It'd be a swan.
I think they have flyover plans. They've got vans lined up. It'll be, you know, go rent your best house.
Stop.
This is what those who read early miss out on, is this good night. And tomorrow, summer rec packets for the kids, so the school kids will get the summer rec packets. We'll also have them available at City Hall, we'll have them available at Boys' Brills Club and the library as well. That's open enrollment now through June third. And we did get a swimming instructor. We were pretty much on the ropes trying to find someone to lead swimming lessons. Our longstanding instructor, Linda Stoll, moved to Florida last year, and so we were, had nobody local that was certified. It's WSI, Water Safety Instructor certified. So, by word of mouth and by advertising as best we could, we had an individual over by the Sioux Falls area interested. She's an educator, and so she'll finish up teaching her school. She'll actually go to this... She'll actually go to this weekend WSI class to get WSI certified, which works out fantastic. We don't have any local classes in the near future for somebody to do. And then what was brought to Evan Finance is that we offered her an agreement form that she takes this class out of her own pocket, and after she finishes her season, the city then will reimburse her for the cost of the class. So, we're guaranteed a good employee through the summer, otherwise we don't reimburse her to take that class for us. So, thank goodness, we'll have swimming as part of our summer rec for 2016. Other than that, you guys have been thrown here, and as always, if you have questions, reach out to my cell, phone, text, email, stop-in, whatever. We're happy to answer questions at any point.
Thank you, Nolan. Given the time, I'm just going to remind everybody, we have a lot of important hearings on May 2nd, so please be prepared. A lot of important activities, as always, but thank you all for preparing for tonight and accommodating our executive session schedule. I think that worked out well. I appreciate the effort there, and... And appreciate all you sticking around for the finale tonight, all right.
You heard some stuff that you wouldn't have heard before. Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
To give you guys a heads up, if you haven't got phone calls yet, there will be a political forum done on May 23rd from 6:30 to 9:00, and you'll be getting phone calls, so maybe you'll rest in the information.
I reiterate my motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?